Through it and good, good humor and good timing without giving anything short shrift. I do also want to say that at our board retreat, we did talk about the one, two, three, four, five, six committee, working committees of the board. That includes one ad hoc committee. Finally, this afternoon, I heard, I've heard from all the board members about their wishes to be, remain on a certain committee or committees and/or switch committees. And at this point, based on the list, we have some shifting around. The chairs are all remaining, but the members, membership of those committees may change. So I will be letting Holly know who volunteered to be on which committees. And I will let the chairs know who volunteered to be on your particular committees. You may remember that we need to settle our calendar for 2025 around the end of this month. Ideally, we would be talking about the calendar for 2025 at our next board meeting. So I'm going to ask the chairs of the working committees of the board to confer with the people who have re-upped or volunteered newly to be on your committees to figure out what time of day and what day works for them. We also did discuss at the retreat that not every committee necessarily does the kind of work that requires a monthly meeting. So you should be also thinking if your committee is the kind of committee that needs to be every other month rather than monthly, certainly like finance probably needs to, most certainly needs to be monthly because we need to review things on a monthly basis related to the budget for the schools and things like that. But there may be other committees that don't. So if you have any questions about that, probably worth checking in with Tracy and Holly about that as a committee chair to see what they might recommend too. I know Holly leaves next week, so I'm, her last day is next week. So I'm asking folks to follow up on that expeditiously. Okay? So I'll get you that information tomorrow. And then finally, I know this is longer than usual, but today is Holly's last meeting with us. And I just want to publicly thank Holly for all her care and feeding and nurturing and nudging and organizing of the Board of Education. I know it takes up a fair amount of your time and we, we wish you well in your next job. It sounds like an exciting job and we're going to miss you. We have a gift for you that we'd like to give you. So please don't escape at the end of the meeting without us getting a little chance to gather around and, and say thank you to you in closer proximity. Thank you very much. Let's give Holly a standing ovation. You, you will be missed. I want to reassure the board that in the interim, until we can go through the hiring process and bring in a new person to this position, the previous person who did this position, Janet Testa, has agreed to come out of retirement for a very short stint with us, but just to make sure that things don't fall through the cracks and we have somebody doing the job that understands it pretty well. Right? Oh yeah, well, we'll have Janet squared because we'll have two Janettes. That's right. Thank you Janet for being with us tonight and we'll be seeing more of you, I'm sure. Thanks. And that's it for my board report. And now we're on to superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you very much. Before I jump into the actual information in the packet, I just wanted to let the note, let the board know that you have some information in front of you. You have an invitation to the Sweeney Feast. Can't forget that. Please let us know if you'll be coming. You have an invitation to the community open house, which we'll talk a little bit more about in my report. Obviously you have the slides for tonight. You also have some accountability index celebrations, which we're going to go into more, more in depth in a future board meeting. I don't know if it'll be next board meeting or the, or the first one in December, but I wanted you to have some information because they did release the accountability index information today. And we have some good news. For example, of the 22 indicators that the state uses to figure out our accountability index for two consecutive years in a row, Wyndham has improved on 14 of them. And I've given the board the list of those 14. Obviously we want to be able to improve on all of them always, but 14 out of 22 is actually double what the state improved on. So we know we're moving in the right direction. Very excited about that. I will let you know that Natchog School was identified as a school of distinction for high growth, for high need students in ELA. We're very excited about that. And Wyndham Middle School, we've confirmed has once again increased their accountability index and is for two years in a row now functioning above pre-pandemic levels, which we're really excited about. And as you'll see on the back of this, and we'll talk more when we do a presentation for the board, but you'll see I've given you the confirmed accountability index for each of the schools. And so one of the, another amazing feat is Wyndham Center Schools Accountability Index that jumped from 52.4 to 63.8. So that's some heavy lifting on Wyndham Center School side. And all of the schools there in green, five of our seven schools have increased their accountability index from last year. So we're, we're happy about that. So more to come on this, but I wanted the board to know that we are definitely as a district moving in the right direction on, in all the ways that the state determines our success. So wanted you to have that and more to come on that. Okay. First item on my report is just to give the board an update on our professional development day. On Friday, November 1st, it was a full professional development day, no school for students. We offered a variety of sessions, including one related to the equity walkthroughs where 70 staff members across the district were trained in a protocol and a process that we'll be using to determine, in addition to our tier one focus on instruction, whether or not our classrooms are truly living up to our goals of equity. So excited about that. And you have in your packet, the actual, the session details. I'm sorry, I'm like drawing a blank. Any questions on PD? Next in your packet? Nope. Next in your packet is just to let you know that they've made some adjustments at the state and we now have to get board approval on grant submissions related to the Alliance Grant. So in your packet, you have a general overview of this $10,508,632 grant and how that's broken down. So we're giving you the information so that we can get that approval that the state now requires. Next is just to let the board know that on November 14th, grade eight students and their families have been invited to Wyndham High School. Given you the details of the presentation that'll be provided that night and some facts that the board has actually already been up to, kept up to speed on in terms of why families should choose Wyndham High School. We're working hard to get the word out there, as are the Wyndham High School students. They're actually doing projects in Dr. Colgen's class about trying to address the misconceptions that exist in our community about their high school. So I'm excited to see those results because it's really powerful when the students teach us what it is that we need to put out in the community. At this event for the eighth graders, there will also be an opportunity for those eighth graders that have been identified as being a part of the new Wyndham High School Honors Program. And information about that program is in the board's packet. Essentially, we've identified a special track of high level coursework and benefits and opportunities that come to these high performing students. We'll, we'll be using a rolling admission into this program, but we're excited to get this program up and running. And we've already heard word on the street is the kids are very excited and we may actually already see students who might not have chosen Wyndham High School to come our way. So that was our goal. So we're waiting to see that all play out. It's very exciting for us. And again, there's a flyer that one of our students created to put the word out there on the street. So we're very excited about that. Next, another opportunity for us to brag. Sweeney School is being celebrated. They've been chosen as the Connecticut Big Brothers, Big Sisters Site of the Year. They were selected due to their kindness and support for their volunteers, their welcoming environment and their dedication. And I guess there were, I believe it was in the eighties, number of schools that could have been chosen and they picked Sweeney School. So it's really exciting. So shout out to Sweeney School. We love, we love the recognition. We love that site of the year is pretty awesome. Also another, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to make one editorial note. Over the years, Wyndham has been one of the largest users of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We've had the largest number of matches using the Eastern students and Yukon students primarily through our before and after school program, but we have traditionally been one of the large matches that they've had across, across the whole state.
I love that. We're keeping it up. We're living it up, up to that level. Thank you, Mark. All right. Last year, the board remembers, we let you know that Natchog had been recognized as a red, white and blue school. At the end of last month, Principal Enamite was invited to the kickoff event for the red, white and blue schools. Congratulations to Natchog School for that distinction. We are very proud. Lots of things happening for our schools getting recognized. Very exciting. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the community open house. We are inviting the entire community in to see the newly renovated high school and central office spaces. The project is just about completed, $112 million project that we're incredibly proud of. At this event, we are going to recognize the building committee members who have given, have volunteered their time for years now, every other Monday, pretty much around the clock. So we're going to celebrate them and take people on tours of the new space and offer some refreshments and celebration of this grand opening.
I have a question. Are we also sharing this information with social meet, on social media and other online, Spanish and English?
I see Holly shaking her head. Yes. I know we pushed out to the town government. We can keep pushing it out on social media and keep getting the word out there and spread the word. We'd like to see as many people show up as possible.
It would be nice if, if we could have it, the invite in Spanish too. Oh. Oh, flip, if I flip it over? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. I was just looking at the screen and I was not looking at my piece of paper. Sorry.
All right. And last but not least is just to remind the board that we are continuing on our policy. It's, it's, it's been an adventure, this particular overhaul of our complete policies, many of which have, were as old as 2005 and 2007. We're actually going to get you an updated percentage of how many policies are left to complete this project. We're working on that. We know we're coming to the end, but there's still some work to do. So you will have one policy for tonight's agenda for adoption and you'll see some policies proposed for repeal.
Thank you. Any questions on the superintendent's reports? No, a lot going on. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. And now we're on to committee reports and I'm going to turn it over to you Brendan for school planning and design.
Thank you. We met, I think it was last week. We got some facilities updates from SLI regarding the North Wyndham oil tanks, as well as some of the capital improvement projects that are in progress. Then we went into a conversation about the planning for the fifth grade move into the middle school and some of the challenges and tasks we have to do there. There was some discussion of the use of the Wyndham Center Building after this current school year, as well as furniture for grade five as it moves into the middle school.
Any questions or comments from the board on that? Thank you Brendan. Oh, Mary, did you have your hand up? No.
Um, is it at the next meeting that we'll hear about the roof assessment that SLI was going to request for Wyndham Center School?
I believe he was trying to have it for the next meeting, but I don't know that he guaranteed it.
Thank you Brendan. Well, maybe you could follow up on that then. That'd be great. I'm going to hand it over you, to you, Mark, for the ad hoc elementary school consolidation, construction, planning committee.
Yeah, we met on the 29th of October, just to review more of what we've had done prior. During that meeting, we, it was, it was confirmed that the land contract has been signed for the site. We're currently working on RFPs for the, with the basic site tests so that we can confirm their, the usefulness, or I guess the availability of the, of the land to work on. And there's an ongoing work with a subgroup of the committee to work on our community outreach project as well. And the next meeting will be December 3rd.
Any questions for Mark? I just want to say for the public's information, just remind folks that acquisition of land for a school building is a town function, not a board of ed function, and that we don't, we don't purchase the land. We've just been working with the town on this issue. So the tests that Mark referred to are tests that need to be done on the site to figure out whether the sale can really move forward. And at some point, it will have to go to the voters for approval. And that will be sometime in 2025, hopefully in the early part of 2025. Just in case people are wondering. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Policy Committee, Katina.
Thank you Holly and staff for facilitating these meetings of policy, of the policy committee, bringing up all the policies that have been revised. And you have for your consideration, a few policies for repeal that are not mandated anymore. And one, which is the meal charging policy to comply with USDA and has been revised by the staff here in Wyndham. So we'll continue to make progress and put all our policies up to date.
Any questions for Katina? No? Thank you. Personnel Committee, Paula.
Personnel met last Monday. My apologies again to the committee for being a little late. I was kind of in between episodes. Grace gave us an update on the professional development that HR continues to do. She also talked about the, they're working on the increasing educators diversity update to come up with the revisions that are required by the state so we can get our final acceptance. She also gave us an update on new hires and vacancies and her presentation will be put in with, with the minutes for the next meeting and if anybody needs them beforehand. We also had an update on negotiations. I think we're awaiting the final word on the nurses' acceptance of the contract tentatively agreed upon. And we had approximately a five hour mediation center meeting with the teachers last Wednesday, which went well. And we have a tentative agreement. Two things, we had a lot of give and take, as we should with any union negotiation, but one of the good things is we were finally able to simplify the schedule for our coaches and our advisory staff for their stipends. Because we had a pretty convoluted and complicated process prior to. So hopefully that will go through and that should pretty much culminate the negotiations for this year. Let's see. Dr. Youngberg already mentioned the RFP for the firm, searching for a firm to help us with the superintendent's search. Also, we inquired about the update on a new principal for Barrows. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Paula? Thank you Paula. Curriculum, Mary?
We met October 16th to learn about the rather daunting assessment calendar that students are now required to undergo. And Neil did a presentation to show the relationship between curriculum, instruction and assessment. And then we went through the various I-ready readings, et cetera. There's numerous acronyms and examples of tests for math, reading, Spanish, et cetera, and even kindergarten, which is sounds a little troubling, but it was a very good presentation. And I do like the graphic that Neil created, so I'm using that for my notes.
Any questions for Mary? Okay. So finally, Finance and Audit Committee, Mark.
Always good to say the best for the last. Thank, thank you.
We planned it.
Excuse me. So we met just before this meeting at six o'clock. Amongst the discussions we had was, excuse me, our budget transfers. We're recommending transfer of $425,590. The actual sheet is in your board packet of where those come from. There was discussion of the year-to-date budget, which was as of September, because we're still working to, to get a lot of that information via the town. There's number, a number of discussions we had that are waiting for the town to close their books so that we can move on to ours. We had discussion of the ECS shortfall, that $580,000. We're discussing that again. That's also tied up with, with getting the town to close the books so that we can get a more accurate figure of what money we might have left in grants or anywhere else. And that's going to be continued on to our next finance meeting in December, which will be prior to when we have to meet again with, with the Board of Finance. The discussion of the timeline, actually that, that is on tonight's agenda, so we didn't do much on the timeline for the 25, 26 budget. And that, I believe, was it.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Okay. So now we're on to discuss, discussion items. When Dr. Youngberg let us know that she was accepting a position at another school district to be superintendent, the board had an executive to be superintendent, the board had an executive session and did make it, we're going to vote on it tonight, but we're, we're moving forward to do a formal search for a new superintendent. And in order to do that, we need to put out an RFP in order to solicit proposals from potential firms that would help us with that process. And so Tracy has shared some information with us and you might want to just talk for a minute or two about it and then people can ask questions, have a discussion.
So I have prepared for the board a draft RFP that would enable us to advertise to get a firm hired to do an actual search. In the draft, you'll see we've created a confidential email. We've given the, the firms interested in throwing in a proposal, the opportunity to either respond through that confidential email or to actually deliver the bid documents in person. I have in the document what I think are good dates in terms of an effective timeline moving forward. Obviously, the faster we push out the RFP, the faster we can turn around and start the process. If you use the timeline in the draft, the RFP would go out by the end of this week. And we would be looking for proposals to come in about two weeks after that on the 22nd of November. And then the, then the committee that the board should establish will go through those proposals and determine the finalists and actually interview the finalists to figure out who's going to get the contract. And if this timeline is correct and is in, you know, the board's liking, we could actually start the process as early as January with a superintendent being identified. And I have in the timeline by the first week in April, April 4th, 2025. It could happen sooner, but certainly by that date. So what I'm looking for tonight, or I think what the discussion should be is whether or not there's information in this RFP that you'd like to see taken out or have revised or things added. I did follow a couple different examples and tried to pull out what I thought were the most important pieces to get us a decent set of proposals.
Thank you. Just before I call on anybody else, I want to just correct myself. I misspoke when I said we had a special meeting. We didn't have a special meeting to talk about this. We actually talked about this in our retreat because Tracy had made the announcement that she would be, that she attended, you know, had let us know that she would be moving on. So we adjusted our board retreat agenda to allow us to consider doing a search. The other thing I'd like to add to the discussion about the search is a search committee. And ideally, what board members are thinking of regarding how we should design that search committee, we did when we had our preliminary discussions, speak with a lot of agreement among ourselves that we wanted to include various stakeholder representatives from various stakeholder groups in the search committee process. So I'll open it up. Anybody? Paula?
I was interested because I had looked at the one that we had, the example one from Mansfield, and that was okay. But I really thought there was a lot of information lacking. So I was really glad to see, especially the description of, you know, who we are and to help with the expectations of, of the candidates.
Thank you Paula for recognizing that because it's true, the Mansfield one got at what they were looking for, but it didn't really tell, you know, who the district was. So a couple of the other examples I used actually had some information I was able to tailor to our needs. So I appreciate you noticing.
Katina?
Yes, I agree and appreciate that we will have, if we approve, an agency type person to, or people to get applications and screen them. I have participated in searches for higher-up positions that, and it facilitates not only the, the direction in which the, is coming, but also in what we should be looking for and coach us through the time, coach the, the team through time. So I think it's perfect that we have someone external look for candidates and then everybody can apply, internal or external applicants.
I just want to say, internal applicants could certainly, just reiterate, could certainly apply for the position as superintendent as well as people from outside the district, across the country, in the region, in the state, whatever. Well, that's nice to hear that you had a good experience with firm. Anybody else want to weigh in on the process? The stakeholders, the committee, things of that sort? Nobody has any opinion about any of that?
Are we suggesting stakeholders?
Not particular individuals, but I don't think we should be talking about that right now, but I do think we should be talking about the types of representatives that we'd like to have on the search committee. And then we can do an open call and get people to put their names in. I, I mean, I would suggest we do it that way. I don't know whether people have another way they think we should do it. I, I would suggest that the board not be the entity that goes and says, we want this person from that stakeholder group or whatever, but that we let the folks know what we're looking for and the time commitment that it's going to be and see who might be interested.
Definitely the, the, the teachers and different unions in the system. I would recommend that they have a representative. Sorry for my voice.
Mark, you had your hand up?
One of the things I noticed with the town manager's search is the town put out information through, and a
Survey.
Survey through, through, thank you, survey through social media to solicit ideas from various people. So they don't have to be necessarily committed to be on a search committee, but we could solicit ideas from the community as to what they would like to see, what qualities they're looking for. So again, I thought the town did a nice job with that, having the survey.
And I do know when it comes to the superintendent searches, often there's a confidentiality piece. People might be looking for a position while they're in a position. So sometimes a survey is the best way to get at the information without the potential for information to be leaked out into the community about who your candidates are. So that may be the way the search firm directs you. I'm not sure about that, but I, I know that that is definitely something that people have expressed concerns with.
Katina, you could just hold a second. Is, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Did the Personnel Committee have any conversations about the process itself?
No, we were just talking about the, the RFP.
Okay, okay.
Well, in our future meeting.
Okay. Katina?
Yes, Mark just reminded me that in fact, for the town manager, there's going to be like a little open communities that drop in and out at the community center this coming Saturday. So people can say what they are looking for and those will be kind of put in a list for the town manager. So we can, we can have something like that, like a community engagement type of session where people can come and just say, okay, this is what we would like in a superintendent.
I'm sure whatever firm we have can help with those kind of, that kind of process and give us best practices for how to conduct those meetings. Yep, Mark?
A clarification, Lynn. Am I correct in, in understanding the board will review the RFPs and then set up a search committee to interview the candidates? Those are two separate groups? Is that?
Yes, I think so.
Thanks.
Right? The board needs to just get the RFP out and get that moving. If we wait to set up all the stakeholders and whatever, I mean, I think we're talking about them being more involved in the actual interview process and, and, and figuring out who we might like to recommend as the final candidates and things of that sort.
I'd like to be clear that that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Very quiet tonight. Okay, so we're, we have the draft RFP, which is on the, it's on the agenda under, under action items. So unless people have other things to add right now, we could be potentially taking action on the RFP tonight. Okay. In the meantime, I think I would encourage board members, if you didn't say something tonight in this discussion, you have some thoughts on the process that we can put into the upper to be considered on how to make the process engaging and make sure the community at large feels like we're listening to what they have to say and they could potentially have representatives in the process. Please let me know, okay?
And I just have one question. I'm assuming that you'll vote for the search, the group that will choose the actual bids at the next board meeting so that we're prepared to actually interview those
Right.
Search committees as soon as they come in.
Ideally, if we can. But that's a pretty quick turnaround. Hopefully we can do it. Anything else? Okay, and I, I know some members of the community at large may have thoughts about the process or interest in the process. And just like, rest assured that at some point we'll be asking folks to put their names forward, okay? Interim Superintendent, well, with Tracy leaving on December 11th and the board making a decision to do a search, we have, we're put in the position of having to choose an interim superintendent to be sort of the keeper of, of, of the district along with the board while we go through this transition process. The interim is not going to just roll into being superintendent. And in fact, we've asked Tracy to make a recommend, Tracy came to us with a recommendation for the interim structure while, when she leaves to get us through the transition period. And we had an opportunity to meet with Neil Weathers and have a, have a conversation with him, the board did. And the board will be potentially taking action on appointing Neil Weathers as the interim superintendent for the, for the transition period. And let's open it up for discussion now. People may have things they want to talk about. Or questions, comments, anything? Paula?
I think we had a pretty good discussion that night. Thank you for all the information that we got and for the opportunity to have the discussion. But I know personally, I feel pretty comfortable.
Katina?
I think that what's most important is to keep consistency and direction and be as stable as possible in the process of a search for a superintendent where people can feel free to apply. So that I think is the main goal, is not to be learning the interim, you know, job, but just to keep us moving in the right direction right now. So.
We also did discuss with Neil the fact that his interest is to be interim and not to be superintendent. And he also doesn't have his O93, so he couldn't be superintendent. So it is, it is clear that he would be in that job. And knowing probably more than anybody else in the district, what Tracy had on her mind day to day and how things were running in the district. So that was, we had a very good discussion with Neil the other night about all this. And do you have something you want to read there?
I have information to read. I don't know if you want me to do it now, if you want me to wait till it's time to take the vote, but I do have some information.
You think it's relevant to the discussion? Okay.
Mr. Weathers, who by the way, everyone should know is growing his beard out to go along with the fundraiser at Wyndham Center School. He has a Santa beard coming in. It's really cute. I was saying to Brendan, I've worked with Neil for eight years now. I've never seen him not clean shaven. It's the first time ever. So Mr. Neil Weathers is currently in his 25th year of service in Connecticut's public schools. Prior to coming to Wyndham in 2015, he worked for 15 years in the Meriden Public Schools, including six years as a math resource teacher, one year as an elementary math curriculum specialist, and eight years as the supervisor of mathematics for that district. For the past nine years, Neil has served in the Wyndham Public Schools as the Director of Accountability, Performance, and Assessment, the Acting Assistant Superintendent, and since, since July 1 of 2020, the Assistant Superintendent. He holds both a bachelor's and master's degree in elementary education from Central Connecticut State University and a sixth-year certificate in educational leadership from Southern Connecticut State University. During his administrative tenure, Neil has had extensive experience in curriculum and instruction, especially in mathematics, has served as the district's assessment coordinator. He has overseen professional development, operational departments such as transportation and information technology. He has supervised teaching and learning and has had numerous experiences collaborating with and working with both the Finance and Human Resources Departments. Essentially, Neil has been a cabinet-level utility player for the past five-plus years. He is dedicated, loyal, and truly interested in the district's success. His role as my number two means that he is and has been actively involved in the daily operations of the district and a key player in emergency responses, leadership decisions, parental outreach, budget discussions, HR investigations, student discipline matters, and long- and short-term planning and goal-setting. I believe the work Neil and I have done together to support the district in its stability from a budget, facilities, teaching and learning, and leadership perspective has been amazing training for him. There is not another employee in the district who has the kind, the kind of on-the-job training that Mr. Weathers has experienced in, over the past five years. I believe it will serve him well in the interim superintendent role, which is why I am recommending the board appoint Mr. Neil Weathers, my favorite Assistant Superintendent. We talk about this all the time. He's my only one, but he is my favorite. I believe that he will do a wonderful job of steering the district forward and keeping things stable from the time I leave December 12th to the hiring of the new superintendent. So that is where, why I'm recommending Neil.
Any other discussion? Neil, is there anything you'd like to say? Not to put you on the spot, but...
I just want to say thank you for considering me for this opportunity. Thank you for your kind words, Dr. Youngberg. You've been a mentor and a teacher and just a colleague and friend over the past nine, or eight years that we've worked together. And I really appreciate everything I've learned from you. If given this opportunity, I want you to know that my efforts are centered around moving this district in the direction it's going until you choose a new leader. And I really just care about this district and want it to be stable. And, and, and I care so much about the staff and students and the families and community. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm feeling some kind of mama pride or something.
Okay, seeing no other comments or discussion, we'll move on to the next For discussion, we'll move on to the next item, which is the recommendation to approve Evan Jones as principal of Barrow's STEM Academy. Just so everybody knows, there was a formal group interview process for this position. There were candidates vetted and recommended to the committee. The committee had representatives from the teaching staff at Barrow's, the administrative staff at Barrow's, central office staff, the Board of Education, and a parent of a student at Barrow's school. We did interview, I think, six candidates and narrowed it down to four, and then one for second interviews, and then one withdrew, and we did a group of second interviews. I'm saying we because I was actually on that committee. And then the recommendation of the two finalists was made to Tracy, and she did the final interviews and, and is now coming to us with this recommendation. Tracy, would you like to say what you have to say about your recommendation?
Absolutely. As you mentioned, there was a multi-tiered interview process involving stakeholders from Barrow's central office, HR, the Board of Ed, Wyndham Federation of Teachers, Wyndham administrators, and parents were a part of that group. Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, as I like to call him, rose to the top in our third round. As the board is aware, Mr. Jones previously held the role of principal at Nachog School. His tenure there actually set the stage for the success the school is currently experiencing under Principal Enamite. He left Wyndham in July of 2023 to lead an international school in Nicaragua. We were sorry to see him go, but understood his desire. Since returning to Connecticut, Mr. Jones accepted a principal position for Plainfield Public Schools. Coming full circle, we were delighted when he rose to the top of the candidates in the search for the principal of CH Barrow STEM Academy. Mr. Jones brings with him a positive energy, passion for education, social emotional strengths, and inclusive leadership practices. Prior to his departure for Nicaragua, he was the longest-running principal at Nachog School since the 1990s, so that's a feat all by itself. He comes to us with degrees, a bachelor's degree in international studies focusing on Latin America. He has a master's degree in special education from Southern Connecticut State University, as well as educational leadership degree from Sacred Heart University. As we know, he clearly loves to travel and has worked as a teacher, learner, and leader in Colombia, Mexico, Costa Rica, Spain, Jamaica, Guadalupe, Quebec, France, and Nicaragua. When he is not working, he loves to play tennis and spending time, to spend time with his two daughters and his wife, who is also an educator. He's assured us he's going to stick around. No international schools anytime soon. And I will tell you, as a superintendent on my way out, it, it does make me feel really good that someone with Evan's experience is going to be leading that school. And again, the idea of keeping stability while, while things, while there's a lot of transition, so I appreciate knowing that Evan is being considered tonight and for all those reasons and you know, just his track record in our district, I'm recommending that Mr. Evan Jones be the next principal of CH Barrow STEM Academy.
Evan, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, I have to start by thanking my wife of 18 years for being here to support me. And she is always teaching me with refranes and dichos, right? And so her saying tonight was, un buen niño siempre regresa a su casa. A good kid always comes home. And really, that's how I feel in this moment that I am coming home. So I would just like to thank you for considering my appointment as the principal of CH Barrow School. It's an honor to be here again. And looking forward to supporting students, staff, and families at Barrow's, and I promise to bring my A-game every day. And we'll focus to create an environment where students thrive academically, emotionally, and where students and staff feel valued, empowered, and supported. And you know how I feel about relational trust. And I will work to strengthen relational trust and create the best school that anyone's ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Any further discussion on this item? It is on the agenda for an action item later on. And it's nice to see you have your, your partner here and that she, I love the saying, a good kid comes home. That's great. Okay, next item on the agenda is the proposed budget preparation schedule for 2025, especially with Tracy transitioning out next month. We had conversations with her about getting started early on the budget process so that we're in the best possible position to carry the momentum through into 2025. It's going to be a tough budget year for the town and for the Board of Ed, probably, given everything that we've been hearing in the community. So it's a good thing that we're starting early. Tracy, you want to say anything about that?
Sure. So in your packet, you have the revised schedule that we're proposing. The only adjustment, sort of tweak, we have to make to what's here on paper is we had hoped to start the process as early as the end of last week. We've been pushed back a little bit on that, but the window that we've given to have those beginning conversations with principals, mostly about their staffing budgets, which are the largest of the district, the largest percentage of our district and school budgets, that, that window is still going to exist. So it's, it's an accurate you know, record of what we're proposing for the budget preparation. And again, it's another place where we hope to have as much done prior to my departure as possible, so we can set the district up to be stable after I'm gone, and we're five for five so far. Mr. Weathers is just saying, you know, want to make that six for six. So that's the goal.
Any questions, suggestions, changes to that schedule that anybody wants to make? This will provide us a roadmap to work with the interim and Rita to keep, keep us moving along. I mean, it's good to have these dates out there now so that we can keep ourselves on track. Okay, well, if we adopt this, I urge board members to put these dates into your calendars because it does require a few extra meetings when we get into the budget process. Okay. Now we're on to adoption of meal charging policy, policy, the model policy as revised. Katina, do you want to talk to us about this?
Yes. Again, this is to comply with the USDA Community Eligibility Provision of the law, and all our students receive a free breakfast and lunch, and that will continue. There, the only change is that neither staff nor students can charge for the cookies. So there are little things that students can have or staff can have. And then they cannot just kind of run a, how do you call that? Run a, yes.
They can't charge them.
Of special note is that it's prohibited to refuse any student a meal or change it or giving other options in terms of the regular meals for disciplinary actions or because the student couldn't afford it. And that used to be a practice of Wyndham Public Schools years ago. And I'm happy that the law is specific about that. So that's it. It's to, you know, it's updated to comply, and the only thing is that as a staff, I cannot say, okay, give me, you know, these crackers. I'm hungry and I'll bring you the money later. I have to bring the money and they'll give it to me.
Questions? Anybody have any questions about that? Paula?
I have to admit, I was totally confused reading that, that paragraph. So students can have that second meal or the à la carte. It's just no charging? So who pays for it?
But the students can bring their own 50 cents to get an extra
So they would have to pay for it.
Whatever they are offering, or staff can say, okay, I want to have lunch today, and they should be paying.
Okay, so as you said, nobody can run a tab?
Yes.
Okay. And, and there was that question about debt, about, how did they? Yeah, it was, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that.
Yes, we, the law says that because we are, because we provide free at any cost lunch and breakfast for all students. We cannot be like a business that, that charges, not that keeps like that.
Right, okay.
Amount of money owed to the system.
Right, so if a child wasn't able to follow through to pay for what, it would just go as a loss to us.
It would.
We cannot force payment.
No.
Right.
The, the, the extra things that are at the lunch, at the lunch. If the kid wants to have an extra juice, then they will have to pay it right there or the staff, right? Brendan, am I explaining this correctly?
That is, that is correct.
A custom before that we could, we could say, okay, I want a salad for lunch and I'll pay Friday or after, you know. So that's it. It's just the law, to comply with the law.
It makes sense.
Free lunch and breakfast.
All right, thank you, Katina.
Thank you.
The language is a little difficult, yeah. Legalese.
Legal language is hard.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this policy? We are, we do have it as an action item this evening, so. Thank you. And then the last item on discussion is the Seal of Bilinguality Awards.
Yeah, so the Wyndham Association of Administrators, WA, has made a very generous offer to provide scholarships for the students who are earning the Seal of Bilinguality. You have information in your packet, and I believe there's someone potentially here tonight to speak. Is that accurate still? Is that you, Kathleen? Okay. Okay, so, so you want me just to read the statement and then, okay, all right. Thank you. The Wyndham Association of Administrators, in an effort to recognize the achievement of bilingualism and bilinguality by our students, has approved and would like to give a monetary award to this year's graduating seniors who earned the Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality. This year, WA has budgeted $4,000, a very generous offer. Thank you, WA, for this purpose, with the intention of awarding $100 per student who earns the seal. If the number of graduating seniors who earn the award exceeds 40, and that could happen, because we are moving, then WA would divide the amount equally amongst the students who earn the Seal of Bilinguality. The following year for the 2026 graduating class, WA will need to revisit the budget and amount for this award as it may not have the same amount available. So we appreciate WA's generosity in offering $100 per student for the graduating seniors who earn the Seal of Bilinguality. Sounds like we don't need to have any more discussion about it unless the board has questions.
Anybody have any questions? No, I'm just, thank you very much. It's a wonderful offer and maybe others will take that on too and, and, and offer more of a scholarship to some of the kids who have this great achievement under their belts when they graduate. Okay, thank you. So now we're on to action items. And the first item is acceptance of the Alliance PSD grant. I entertain a motion to accept that grant. So moved by Brendan, seconded by Ilda. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your hands. It's unanimous. Thank you. Possible vote on the RFP for the superintendent's search. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. Oh, Alicia, you'll get the next one. Any discussion on the RFP? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve appointment of Neil Weathers as the interim superintendent.
So moved.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Ilda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Congratulations, Neil. I've been an interim in charge of an organization. It's, it's, it's an interesting job, if you ever want to talk. I'll entertain a motion to approve Evan Jones as principal of CH Barrow's STEM Academy.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula, seconded by Alicia. She got it in there. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Evan. Welcome back. Okay. Vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget preparation schedule for, to adopt really, the budget preparation schedule for 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meal charging policy.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. So now we have action on policies for repeal. And I'd entertain a motion to approve Item G numbers one through eight.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Ilda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. H, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Seal of Bilinguality Awards to Wyndham High School seniors for the 2024-2025 academic year as generously put forth by WA.
So moved.
Motion made by Alicia. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ilda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. I'd entertain a motion to accept the Title I, II Grant for Fiscal Year 24-25.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept a donation of $2,500 from the Hartford Marathon Foundation to benefit the Wyndham Cross Country Team. Very appropriate. That's great.
So moved.
Motion made by Alicia. Motion made by Alicia. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Paula. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, unanimous. Now we have a couple of field trips coming up. I'll entertain a motion to approve a field trip for Wyndham Center School to Old Sturbridge Village on April 25, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. All those, any further discussion?
Great field trip.
All those in favor, oh, did you have, oh, you're raising your hand to approve? Now that's a good question. Okay, unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to approve a field trip from, for Sweetie School to the Roger Williams Zoo on May 30, 2025.
So moved.
So moved by Alicia.
Second.
Seconded by Ildah. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And then the final action item is a budget transfer, to approve a budget transfer is recommended by the Finance Committee of $525,590.
Wait, that doesn't sound right.
Oh, that's not right. I mean, 425, or I read the number wrong. Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Second by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, that's it for action items, public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none here or online, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:12.
We move.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks, and welcome aboard, Evan. And welcome aboard to the new job starting in December, Neil.